...of the United States of America and integrated public for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And everybody got their packet, right?
Okay, sorry, late. Okay, so I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting on Thursday, February 3rd. Uh, second, any discussion about the minutes? None, all in favor?
Abstain, yeah, we're gonna have to abstain.
Okay, thank you, and on to the financial report, please.
Just this year, Steve, anything going on this year?
Yep, no, it's pretty straightforward. As we look at it, we can see that we're right in line with past years as far as the percentage of expense, as well as the percentage of encumbrance. Actually, at mid-year, we were about a point or two behind the mid-year point, which is a good thing, so that's a little bit of a surplus there. No significant overages, all the salaries are in line with the encumbered amounts, and your grants, as well as some of the other revolving's are all in very good shape, so all in all, purposes is in doing very well.
And then Lea Ron will come back to budget discussion after the public here, so you can check off fiscal '23, but we've gotta go through the public here before we can do that.
Mm-hmm, okay. All right, any discussion or questions in the financial report? Okay, on to communications.
Yep, we've just got two, sort of FYI, and Mrs. Kelly might even talk a little bit about the TID focused monitoring process.
No.
But we did talk to you last month about the MassDOT grant, so that's the actual award letter, and we did talk about that last month.
Right, and I just wanna let everyone know, this is the one I wanted to talk about.
All right.
We had a webinar with MassDOT Tuesday. The actual amount that we were initially told was like 219. We, when they further reviewed our grant, they did it as a span of between 219 and $400,000 plus, because they wanted to do it right. In our conversation, when they were really, they had all of their team, there were probably about 25 people on the call, they realized the scope of the project may even be bigger, because we have to put a bike lane in and all those things, and so they're willing to work with whatever number this comes up. We have a meeting on, they're coming to do a site visit the end of the month, so they'll be able to walk through it and get a clearer sense. Remember that this is also tied into a sidewalk project on Cedar Street that will run from 20th to the rec center. So we're just really pleased to have this happening for the community and being able to be a part of it, and we just wanna thank Paul for all of his effort on this project.
And the only other thing here is just the letter stating, I think we probably had mentioned a month or two ago, that we were going through a district-wide TID focused monitoring audit, which previously was coordinated review, which previously was CP. I swear every three years they change. It's the same thing, it's really looking at all of our special needs programs and various civil rights categories, and we have never had a review with no findings at all, so it's really been awesome. And again, a finding isn't usually, you know, a horrible thing, it's we didn't find this documentation, or it doesn't have this line in it, but they look at policies, they look at actual records and procedures, and they came here, and the high school, and Brimfield, I think, and looked at our programs, looked at our documentation, and no finding, which is pretty impressive. So I certainly give strong thanks to Brenda Looney, which is mentioned in the letter. She really heads up, she really does a great job, so, you know, we're good now for another three years, although the process starts a year before to actually get through a three year review.
Is there any parent or student input on that?
Yep, they survey the PAPs. Student, I'm not sure what, other than their interaction with students and observing the programs.
Probably not on this cycle, but on the big cycle, I believe, they do, not at the elementary level, but I believe, and we could change here.
Yeah, I can check on the student, but I know they definitely seek to have some parent perspective and send surveys out to parents and meet with your specific PAP groups.
I think every six years is much more intense than what we had this year.
The three-year.
The three-year review, so that's when you get into the parent surveys.
So in three years, it's the sixth year.
Yeah, and they have given us a heads up that they will, a handful of things to make sure we're looking at, really looking deeply at the civil rights, at equity, inclusion. They gave some materials and notes on, when you look at data, to see, for example, one interesting note that they said, I think, we know here at Burgess, as well as across the district, we've got a definite increase in EL students, the English English learners, which we're gonna talk about from a budget perspective. But, you know, they did note that there was minimal or no English learners, for example, currently in AP classes at the high school, so that's kind of something to be looking at. We've just started that tick-up, so there's, you know, we can delve into that, but they kind of said those are the things that they'll be looking at when they come back. Gave us some cues and gave us a great stamp of approval this time.
Well, congratulations.
And that was it for communications.
So we're on to the principals report, Mrs. Kelly.
Kelly, just hand out to you.
Hello, folks. So enrollment, you'll see a little shifting, this is typical time to see shifting in enrollment, where families move during the vacation time, or prepare to move to transition students. I will tell you that that 858 number, we have enrolled nine students since Monday, so that will be reflected in our next report. I want to thank Amy Cantwell for organizing our annual Read Across America event, it was wonderful to see so many members of our community, current administrators and staff. We welcome Officer Colby Titula as the new Burgess School Resource Officer. Officer Titula is a Sturridge resident and the father of three children, his youngest will be, his eldest will be starting kindergarten in the fall, and we want to thank Officer Garrett Dana for his service during the transition. Curriculum instruction and assessment, grades close Monday, March 14th, report cards will be issued on Friday, March 25th. Parent-teacher conferences will be held Tuesday, March 29th, and Thursday, March 31st. The upcoming Early Release Professional Development Day on Thursday, March 24th will focus on MCAS trainings and other school-based activities. You have the MCAS dates that I shared last month. We currently have 78 fully completed registrations for kindergarten, that's a solid number at this point, so we're looking at probably a class of between, I'd say anywhere between 105 and 115. PTO, and we'll have screening on the third and fourth year of Burgess. Other events coming up, Burgess PTO will be hosting the annual Jogathon, this is much earlier than we've had in the past, from March 28th to April 1st. It's being headed up by Kristin Savellis, who headed it up last year, and we have just such tremendous success, so we're hopeful that we're aiming for some really good returns on that. The annual Burgess Talent Show will take place, kindergarten through grade three will happen on April 6th at night, 5:30 to 7:00, I believe is the time, and grade four through six on April 8th at the same time. I'll let you peruse through our wonderful updates from all of our grade levels and our departments, and I just want to add a couple of things that didn't make it to the report. Pool testing, we pool tested on Tuesday, they did a large pool of 50 individuals across all grade levels and departments, and the pool came back negative, which was wonderful. Mask mandate, as you know, has expired. I would say we have about 3% staff and students wearing masks, would you folks agree with that number? I did do a sample poll with the staff the other day, and I think it seems to be reflective. Furnishings, we will be, we have begun and we will continue to begin to bring in some of our furnishings, pulling things in a little bit closer next week, the week after that. Our hope, as long as everything continues to go as well, is to dismantle the upper gym, putting all of our lunches back into the cafeteria, so we'll have the overlap, so you'll have lunches with 125, 250 kids in the cafeteria at a given time, you know, the way we've had it in the past. So we're looking forward to that, you know, that normal routine and being able to access the gyms, because we need that space. We are working with the town very closely, with select board representation, as well as with the town interim town manager and town rep on field projects. There's a meeting that's happening on Monday, in which there's going to be a proposal of some funding to come Burgess Way to do some intensive refurbishing of our fields, so we're very, very grateful for Mr. Kowinski for helping to lead the charge on that. So in addition, we're working with the town on a scheduling program, which a lot of conflicts that we have with granting access to the fields and making sure that we're being equitable with all of the leagues, we are working with the town on a school due scheduling system in which there will be full transparency, and we'll be able to see who's signing up for what, when, and what utilization looks like. So again, another great project in collaboration with the town. We are also planning for end-of-the-year events, and also more typical events such as field trips, as well as with an emphasis on what are we doing for our sixth graders. We met with the sixth grade team today, we have some ideas that we will be moving forward. Any questions?
Oh, I have some, but I'll, if the group start first, with questions on the financial reports?
When I saw the Read Across America Day, it was great, it was really fun to see everybody move and be back in the school, it was really great. Thank you.
Parent-teacher conferences, will they be in person?
They're going to be virtual for this year, just for timeline, we've talked about this at leadership, with the plan for going back. I think we have to, moving forward, we will have to offer an option, you know, does a parent want it in person, or do they want it remote? Because the feedback was very much in favor of the virtual, the virtual meeting, parent-teacher conferences, so we're gonna stick with that for this year, because time is tight, but next year we'll resume a more normal format.
And what feedback was for what?
More, very, quite a few people were in favor of the virtual.
But was there a survey or something?
No, there wasn't, it was answered global, but we did get a lot of positive feedback. We will survey moving forward.
Why do you think I love that, not that it's separate, it's just, I mean, I think it's.
Those are, those are them, those are already in person, yeah. They can't be remote, though, and we do, I will tell you, the vast majority of parents are opting for that to be remote as well.
Really?
And they have that, sort of doing that.
And it's, I mean, we've been doing that all year, it's hard to tell whether folks have chosen because of a discomfort with coming in, or it's just more convenient. So maybe next year we'll get a better feel for what that is, but we need to make sure that we're able to still find a way to offer that.
Yeah, from my family's perspective, I think it's great offering that, not from a safety standpoint, but just, you know, another parent can come if they're still at work, or we have multiple children in the same school, it's great, it's a good thing.
And we're hoping, while we're planning, to sort of, we're thinking, like, how do we do an open house to bring folks back, parents back into the school, because that hasn't happened? We have, you know, almost 250 kindergarten, first graders, whose parents have literally never been in this building. So we're working with, we worked with team leaders on Monday, talking about some ideas, and I think the more practical thing, instead of doing like a big event where we have thousands of people coming onto campus, is to schedule times when the teachers are doing their annual projects, that they invite the parents in to see anyways, and that would provide us with a good opportunity. So examples would be the timeline project for kindergarten, for first grade, Charlotte Web Day for grade three. So that's what we're, that's where we are right now, and what we're looking for feedback from the, from the teams.
The Jogathon, is that indoors, outdoors, virtual?
I'm believing, I believe, no, it's not virtual.
Last year.
It was, it was, it was outdoor.
One day I was there.
I'm not, I'm actually not 100% sure.
Yeah.
It's always, it always has, it's always been really dependent. I think they're planning on doing it inside from the lower gym and going around. I believe that that's the plan, I don't want to commit to that.
Okay. And then another question I have is, so we mentioned about bringing some furnishings back in, I know we rent a pod or something, so what is the?
The PEX plans, to empty those up. Totally systematic.
Would be done, okay. But we, you don't have that by the summer?
I don't know, because there's, there's materials that are in there that I don't know that we'll be able to get everything in. I'm hoping by any summer, but, and then we'll see what's in there.
If we lived in a, in a small neighborhood, those things, like your own house.
That's exactly how, you know what, if I haven't gone looking for it.
Have a yard sale.
That has been my motivation, I mean, if the teachers can attest to it, we need to start to systematically bring things back in. We started beginning of February, end of January, to start to organize and make sure the teachers work, starting to prepare for things.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mrs. Boyd, super plans report.
All right, just a few things. Off and running, and so happy to have masks optional, and I think I've been in at least four schools this week, and it just is, it's just, I'd say on average, classrooms may have about 20% of students or staff that have chosen to mask, which is awesome, no one's stressing over it, they're just going on. Appreciate your patience with a little bussing snafu. Desi really likes to let us know things.
That's the word I got.
Yeah.
Teacher, my teacher's nicer.
Oh, there you go.
I think it's a different. I'd be in a better mood for that one.
Right. One little note slash announcement, I think most of you are aware that Old Sturridge Academy had applied to expand their grade coverage, as well as expand the slots per elementary grade. That application was denied this year, so I think there's some of our communities that are happy to hear that, that they were feeling taxed financially when their school district is providing pretty, pretty good, solid education. Tantasc was concerned at the high school level, I don't know how much concern there really was, I don't know how much interest there would have been, but we don't have that to worry about for a year anyway. Other than that, we are, you know, kind of fastening our seatbelt and buckling up for this long stretch. March to February vacation is rough, especially when you throw MCAS in, and so while we're for the most part happy and see smiles and skips this first week back, we're hoping we can maintain that. That's it.
Any questions from the super? Thank you. We are on to our first public access.
Jackie Cabley, just a couple of questions. One is, it looks like we're on our third School Resource Officer this year, just wondering if they're.
So one, so we're on our, what, Hillary was?
Right.
Yes, the second one.
It's our second one.
Officer Dana was just a cup, was just.
Oh, he was covering.
Just covering, yeah.
Okay, so this will be.
And that was a, that was a Sturridge Police Department staffing.
Okay.
So Hillary was, so, you know, I knew about Hillary, yes, I just meant this year.
But the other situation was a staffing situation.
We had a staff turnover at the police department, but the chief was very gracious to pull in Officer Dana, and, you know, I mean, we could have just not had one for a while, while the new one was getting trained, and I'm so happy that there's enough interest within the force to want to go through the school resource officer training, but we were very fortunate to have a number of trained staff members, so someone, even if that's not their role, that Officer Dana came back and kind of held out the fort during the transition was great, yeah.
The other question I had was just around COVID and, you know, bringing everyone in closer together and closing down the upper gym, which is great, I'm happy that all of that is happening, provided members are trending the same way, so is there, your monitor?
We're using the pool testing results. So for pool testing, so we, again, we had 50 individuals tested the Tuesday after we returned from break, and we had 100% negative. The hope is, is that happens again next week, that's when we'll make decisions about tightening up the classrooms a little bit, and then the following week we'll rely on those results to do the, to do the cafeteria, and we're hopeful that it will be, we'll be able to do that.
Perfect, thank you. Any last public access? Thank you. We're on to subcommittee reports.
You have no report, your negotiation subcommittee will start, actually, one of you got trained this week, the other, he's already trained, and we will start on the 14th.
Excited.
With your expense.
Yeah. All right.
No, well, we had a meeting, it was a quiet one, it was mostly spent going over the budget, and we did vote to bring forward to public hearing a budget of $26,341,533. Also, at that meeting, we did, the Old Sturridge Academy charter and I came up, and we also voted to take no action regarding the new, you know, anything to do with masks, and to continue to follow Desi's guidelines. Other than that, our tech division's very popular, there's a waitlist for out-of-town students who would like to come and be a part of that, that division. The show choir season started, they hosted a really amazing competition, and they placed third in another competition, I'm sure they've probably done more.
I think perhaps.
No? Okay, maybe by the next meeting?
Yes.
And both of the basketball teams are in the playoffs, the boys already won a game, they have another one Friday, and the girls have one Friday.
I think the boys are away Friday and the girls are home Friday.
Yes, if you want to go see the boys, you can travel to Arlington Catholic, I don't know, some party fans if you go there, probably a lot of parents, but an indoor track in swimming had individual, individuals that went to the state competition.
That is it? Thank you.
Or were going to, I don't know if they had already at that point.
Thank you. Discussion on, please. Okay, we are on to unfinished business, do we have any unfinished business?
I have none from a policy point of view, and I think we didn't have any last month, so if there's no other, time might be okay, I bet in the next four minutes I could run through new policies before we recess. Got a good plan, or we can recess now, your call.
Let's see how far we go.
So you have here, I think, four, two, three, four policies that we are looking to amend, and they're very much either housekeeping, or the subcommittee at Tantasc likes to get rid of editorializing language. This is really just a little bit of housekeeping, confirming, it's the principal that process, principal and superintendent that processes, they, this is homebound, this is not homeschooling, this is homebound touring, I'm setting that up. So that's just clarifying the roles. IJL, the suggestion is to strike everything at the end, which just gets into sort of editorializing philosophy, or a general procedure or process more than policy, on sort of just keeping the library materials updated. IJOA, I will actually suggest that if we vote this on first reading, we amend what is in front of you to not strike out the last section. So IJOA is field trips. Tantasc struck out the last paragraph because they have a separate policy on overnight trips. We don't at Burgess, nor do I really think we should, we don't do it often, if at all, going forward, it's unknown, but we'll at least leave it there, so I would suggest we just clean up the top end and amend to leave in the last paragraph. NJB is just that one sort of legal technicality to change, to put disability in there, this policy's dealing with equal opportunities and point blank disability as opposed to the physical and intellectual differences. And then there's a few that we're looking to rescind, but if you want to consider voting these amendments on first reading, we can do the rescinding next or hold.
It's just confusing, because, so the current, the one that says current policy is as written, the current policy, and then on the revision one, it just looks like there's, there's strike through, but are those?
Which, yeah, so the one with strike throughs involved is what we are making the suggestion to be the amendment on first reading. We just included, we didn't even really need to show you the current policy, because we're showing you the strike throughs.
Yeah, that's why I was confused.
Yes, yes, and these aren't policies that were moving things around or anything, sometimes there's a lot of movement and it's worth showing you the current, but yes, you're right, that was not necessary, unadmitted. Yep.
So I move to amend on first reading, policy IHBF, IJL, IJOA, and policy JB.
Second, any discussion on amendment? Are we gonna make the exception to amend, but keep that last?
Yeah, and I'll make the note here, so when you get it back on second reading, it will be.
Okay. And we do also have an opportunity to have more discussion.
Correct, correct.
So any discussion on first reading of amending those four? Call in favor?
And then I would suggest that the chair just call a recess now at 6:30, and we'll come and finish up the public rescind, so we can move into public here.
Okay, all right.
And we're gonna scoot into the cafeteria and see if anyone joins. Larry?
Or introductions?
Very glad, Karen Horvath, Janet Dua, Kristen Tilly.
Deb Boye.
Kathy Hall.
Steve Neverkell.
All right, wants to take over?
I would love that.
Awesome, okay, well, welcome. Mrs. Kelly and I will go through this, but as a general summary, and actually, Steve Neverkell, for those who have not met, he is the director of business and finance, so next year I think he will take a stronger role in the budget process, and he's just kind of still learning the ropes in our district, but he's got lots of school business experience. We just have a few nuances in Tantasc with 61, so he's following along during this. Procedurally, we'll go through the budget, we go through fairly informally at this point in time, but we'll go page by page and address the areas that we think there might be questions or are worth bringing up something, and before we move to the next page, if anyone has any questions, then we have an insert, we do all the opportunities. And at the end, once we've answered all the questions, we will adjourn this, we will go back into our regular budget session, where the school committee will make their formal vote on the budget that they want to set. that they want to send to the finance committee of what a selectmen to actually put on the mark as their request. Okay? So first, I'll give you just a high level summary, the first couple of pages of the number as well as the pictures. Just a little high level picture. Fiscal 23, we're actually in very similar shape as far as percentages to fiscal 22. We are about to present to you a budget that has an increase of 2.1%, which we think is pretty good and reasonable. The charts at the front just break down. There are state categories of your budget, the central office, instructional, ancillary services, et cetera. And we are creeping up a little bit, which I think is a great story, that a little bit more of your budget, 6.2, 69.2% versus 69, is in the instructional core of the budget, which is a great place to be. And 75% of our budget is salaries. We are in a service industry. Most of the salaries are contractually driven. A little pie up in the right shows how those salaries break down, which again, we would hope, and indeed, you've got 70, 80% of all of your salaries are in the direct instructional area, which is as it should be. Down on the left shows you a bit on the enrollment over the last couple of years. While we had had some decline a number of years ago, and we did have that huge drop last year, and that is directly related to COVID, where we had a good number of homeschoolers or preschool who chose not to attend because it's not legally required. So that's what that dip down to 804 was beginning of this year or October 1. Anyway, we were back up to 846 and since then, we declined. We're like another 20 more. So we're getting back up there and then probably in a level area. The next page just shows some trending on the budget. Again, as I said, I think the 2.1 is very respectable, down from 2.8 last year. We do usually each year try to break out, while we don't want to get into one side versus the other or dig into the dollars, we often pull out the special needs categories from the regular because sometimes the special needs categories can be quite volatile. Out of district tuitions or the transportation as well as in-house services can fluctuate a lot any year and really drive a budget. But what we have here is, really the story is our special ed services, both in and out, are pretty level and down in some cases, which you will see soon, which puts our regular operations up a little bit higher than the average. And then we just put a few bulleted down there, which we're going to go through with you right now to show the things that are increasing, such as the specialized transportation, contracted services. We have some positive movement. And we do have in this package some capital plan documents as your technology and your general building infrastructure are part of this budget also. All right. So with that being said, Kathy and I, we're going to move into the third, we're going to move to the first landscape page. The first two pages are just the numbers that go behind those pie charts. And we're going to go page by page, the page one that starts with what says is the 1,000 series. Those are your school committee expenses and your central office expenses. And we're going to give it to Sean and try and talk to the items that I think some would ask about. So this first page on the superintendent's office is showing Burgess specifically, Burgess' share of the entire superintendent office and all the activities that happen there, which is almost exactly the same as it was a year ago, that 23.67 versus 23.66. That doesn't necessarily, as you could mean that the number of students in Burgess is the exact same. It means when we look at the whole Union 61 in Tantascwa and divide those students out, Sturridge's share is almost the exact same, Burgess's share. The note, I think, this budget has actually, was actually voted by the joint committee. So all six school committees got together in November and voted the total superintendent's budget, and then it's been chopped up into six budgets. This is the first of the six public hearings. The main note that we would want to bring up is when you get down to the networking, technology networking line, that increase from current year budget to next year is reflective of, we are undergoing, we're currently in piloting phase, evaluating a new student information system. So as we look next year to implement a new student information system that allows for much more robust student interface, parent interface, and more reliable technology support, the anticipation is it's going to cost us. So these are, these are the, the student. Yes, the current vendor is not serving us well. Currently, we have on pass, I'd have for a number of years, but we're going to be at North Old Power School, School of Students. Yep. Yep. So as we transition, it will cost us more. Most of this cost is in the transition cost of the training, not so much permanently ongoing. I think that we'll be able to go down when it happens. Any other questions on that page? Right. Page two, I have notes and lines all over the place. I'll go first, Mrs. Kelly. You see if I missed anything. So the important notes, there's a couple of notes here. We've got a number of retirements that are resulting in down, shifting. All staff in this building except for day-to-day subs are on contracts. We're negotiating, going to internegotiate for the ed support. Teacher's contract was. So this will be going into year three. So the ed support staff are negotiating. Typically, what we do is we put a pool of dollars on one line in the budget, even though that contract covers all your classroom support staff, classroom assistants, your front office administrative assistants, your custodians, your cafeterias, workers, that all of them. So we have a pool of dollars, a negotiating dollars, which is in the line 215, the integration line. So that increase is not all due to just increase. There is no increase in staff in that line, in staff numbers. There is no increase anyplace in current staffing. It's the same number of staff. The one note is the regular teacher salary, which is line 170, that's contractual increases, both steps and columns. And we did fold in one EL, English learner teacher, that is currently being paid for with federal grants. So with the SRA federal grants that came, we funded that this year, but due to a number of retirements and how the budget looked, this seemed like the year to get that into the budget and get off the federal grant cliff, as I recall it, as I call it. When you go down to the speech rhetoric line, you've got two retirements in there. The contracted services is down. And the flip side of that is going to be, for those of you who will be visiting in a week or two up at Tantascwa, there'll be an increase. So there are a couple of students that have some significant contracted services, usually in the areas of teacher of the deaf and blind, that are moving up to Tantascwa. So it allowed this line to be decreased. Anything else on this page? Page three, and I'm kind of, I'm going to try and double up and look. Your capital plan has your technology. So you see that big bump in hardware? You took the two page or the two pages in capital plan, one of them had one of this technology. So that is a combination of more continued replacement of the smart boards and projectors because they've been in the classrooms old enough that we're cycling through and need to replace all of them. Some additional and other car, so Chromebook devices, oh, are they teacher work?
Teacher.
Yeah, teacher workstations, teacher computers. And there's, we're starting to, we're continuing to work on upgrading service and switches. So it's a, it's a pretty big number, but we want to make sure our technology, as we become more and more aligned on it, we keep up with it. So that's what the responsible, is responsible for that increase. I do want to note, the librarian salary, it looks like it's a huge jump. It is not. The fiscal 22 number is inaccurate. I actually, quite frankly, miss my friend, Mr. Smith on this line. We did have a retirement in librarian a couple of years ago. We had it just before our full COVID year, so we did not replace the position. As you can see, that 50,000 and zero. So we plan to replace at a newer entry level position. We didn't replace it at all last year because we were using those funds just to hold out for and have subs. What ultimately ended up happening was a fantastic classroom teacher chose to move into the librarian position. So we did incur a good savings in the classroom line as opposed to the library line. But that move actually wasn't done on paper until a pay or two into the year. So part of the pay was from that teacher's line. Part of the rest of it was here. In reality, I think it's probably, I think it's about a 90,000 off line this year. So the increase is not much. Kathy and I caught today, right? We have a typo here, if you will see, lines 315 and 310. 315 is 3850 fiscal 22. That's actually what the ask is for next year also. You can see that in the line below on the 23. So that's a level ask. And the increase is in library books that we're going from 5,000 to 7,500. Kathy asks to update our library sheet. You with me there? So it's not as big a jump as it looks, but it's a little bit of a jump up. The new line, 345, is contracted services. We put in guidance. It is a new meeting. Well, it's starting this year and last year. It's translation services, which is really now a special ed category. So that's why we pulled out, it doesn't belong in the special ed contracted services. But we have, as I mentioned earlier, a very increasing year-to-year population of English learners. Kathy, what do you got first?
Thirty-two students as of tomorrow. So we have 37 students that are serving, serving servicing and with 12 different languages. And what Brenda Louie did was she took an average that we've been spending over the past few years on translation services and bumped it up based on, based on the increased involvement in the variety of languages. And the request from them was more than was asking for translation. Translates not just translation, it is also to bring in interpreters into meetings. So if there's a child who has an IEP, your parents' first language is not English, they can request they translated to help for translation services. Any other questions on that page?
This is the first meeting all year. Our fabulous nurse is retiring. So while she has truly done a phenomenal job getting us through the last couple of years, she deserves the rest that she's going to get next year. But that's what's happening there. The nurse's salary line is there is a retirement. So we put a projected replacement there. Started in the next, what year?
Into September. Yep, into September. My birthday in September, which will be nice because we'll actually be able to sort of have her time to really make.
I'm sorry. Oh, sorry. I was asking when she was officially retiring. So it's going to be in September for her time to.
And then in your transportation category, we're planning the same number of bus routes, bus drivers, assuming hopefully we can level off a little bit. We, like everyone in the nation and the state, have certainly struggled. I'm so thankful to our transportation staff because we've had far less problems than a lot of other places in this state. We did actually have a special ed staff over the last month and have some concerns there. But you've got to grade through of internal, regular ed transportation folks. So we're continuing with that. We have always purchased, we cycle through. You've got a fleet, you've got a fleet of 20 buses. So we buy two a year and cycle through them. We certainly spent more this year than last year. We're hoping it levels. That might be unrealistic. Hope we level that. The note down the bottom, just for those who are new or forget, what's happening in the body of this is the total cost of your transportation for all students in Sturbridge. That line, the negative at the bottom, is what Tantascwa will pay for their share of the secondary regular transportation. So we kind of show the full thing and then we back off what Tantascwa is going to pay. We do continue to have increased out of district special ed costs or homeless and foster care costs. And that is partly due to increased placements. At this point in time, it's also due to anticipated cost in fuel. So.
Kathy have a question on this one?
Yep.
The left in the driver's salary line, one of their $24,000 is that?
That, that is, that is an anticipated increase in salary along with the fact that we did have a number of new folks that, of folks that left about three or four years ago. And we do have a scale that when they're here longer, they do get a lot more.
I was wondering, is there, are they on a contract as well?
They don't have a contract. They have an employee manual. So they don't have a firm extension stone contract. The business office tends to look at what's happening with other contracts and within the business and puts in anticipated increases based on that.
So some of that, so most of that is anticipated increase, let's put it this way.
Yes. The current number of drivers. Yeah.
And is that the same for special ed 120, that is the same traditional?
Well, that, and that, that big line there is the increase in cost of staff as well as the increased cost of fuel. So that line is everything. Yeah. And again, I forget if those were new. Because of our kind of weird dysfunctional Tantascwa Union 61, the region is only regionalized grade seven through 12. To make things as fair as possible to all five towns that want to make sure they are only paying the cost of their students that go outside of the district. All of the cost of the tuition, which we'll get to later, and the transportation costs for every Sturbridge student for special needs is in the elementary budget. So that number, while it's huge as it is, it's 725,000 for all K through 12 special needs transportation. And I, if I, I don't have with me, but if I add everything above the cost of your regular transportation for Burgess, you would double, well, everything that's above there is more than the 725, not a lot more. I do have a lot of peers who say the cost of special ed transportation for that smaller, maybe 20% of the population is larger than the cost of regular transportation. It's certainly, it's very volatile. You could have one vehicle going an hour and a half down to Devens or North Hampton. So we are fortunate to have that internal as opposed to having it contracted out. We definitely do save money there. I do have, in fact, Steve updated just recently, every five or six years ago, we compare, we're fortunate enough, Sturbridge owns its fleet, Sturbridge provides its own transportation. The other four towns for regular, outsource. So I go out to bed every three years for them and it's a parking house. So I have and I know what they charge on a pure, on a per route, per day rate. Steve pulled together and updated the data on what it's costing, both what's here and also with the town hall, what are the employment costs, what are the insurance costs. On an annual basis, we have numbers that have looked the same for the last three analysis. It's about total for Sturbridge, it's about $200,000 a year cheaper to run this in-house fleet between the Burgess share and the Tantascwa share. So great people, a lot of work. They're great.
But never mind that they know our kids. They are, you know, they're, they're, a lot of times Sturbridge residents themselves, and they're familiar with our kids. They keep us up to date on the concerns that they might have for children. So it's a different type of relationship than you would have if you were contract servicing.
Yep. So we are fortunate, but it's definitely in one of those areas for anyone who turns the TV on that has been a challenge. We're doing okay. We're doing okay. Anything else on that page? A little bit of a messy page. Um, I'm on page five. And my only notes on the right-hand side in my little writing is really clear enough. The fuel, when we built this budget, we clearly knew we needed to increase based on last year's usage and expenditures. Now, I'm going to try to be optimistic at this point and say that last year, we may have used more than a normal year because we did sometimes have windows open, we had air circulation concerns. We were often across the district, literally throwing money out the window, but we did what we needed to make sure we all saved comfortable. We did, we did lock in just recently. So to put things in perspective, last year we had an oil rate with French River Collaborative, um, most of the central mass, uh, school districts. Last year's rate was two dollars and nineteen cents. We were so thrilled this year to get a rate of one dollar and sixty-nine cents. That's what we're paying now. Next year's rate will be two dollars and ninety cents. And we locked into that about three or four weeks ago before things really started getting rough. So we built this budget before we had that two dollar and ninety cent rate. We built this in the fall, being a little more optimistic. Um, I'm hoping, I think it's going to be short. I'm hoping it's not going to be as short as it could be if our legalization is going down a little bit as we get back to normal. But that is one we definitely have to keep an eye on. What else? Everything else is kind of status quo there. Your capital plan, you've got building projects there of forty thousand and, um, your capital plan has that, a combination of some work on your playground, replacing some things in, in toilets?
Yeah, re-tract insulation. Re-tract insulation on the third floor of the AV section and the D section here.
Any questions on that page? The next page, we're just hanging in. We're, uh, we're implementing new equipment, although we've got other cafeteria things. And your, your replacement of equipment, both the share of central offices, full of school, that's really your copiers. That's just your own, um, copy offices. And then the last page, which again, I remind you all, is all special needs needs. Every student going outside of our town, regardless of whether they're elementary or secondary age, are, are, are in.
Exactly. Students from two point nine years to twenty-two years of age.
Um, this number is actually fairly stable. We've had years where it has spiked up significantly. Um, you could have a private, so these pri, you've got a, a decrease in your private tuition. Those are pretty expensive tuitions. So there's one that has aged out in the, in the last year. Those mass school tuitions, hoping you don't mind getting into the weeds, that's actually your pathways program. Because we literally build the pathways program as if it is a separate school because you do bring in students from the other four Union 61 schools. So we build it as one cost divided by the total number of students in there and charge a tuition for each number of students. So we put that here in this line. So they, they, you know, it looks like we could actually have a couple of those in. We also got specialized programs in.
We did. We have, there's one student in Burquell and one student in Burquell that's eleven year at Burgess.
Excellent. Okay. So we've got ten here, I mean, eleven here in Pathways. You've got a total of about fourteen students for that, six hundred and sixteen thousand. Your private tuition, I believe that that's the three, three, I haven't.
Private seven.
They're actually not as big as I thought they were. Yep. There's seven students in that private line.
Collaborative is six students at the growth of.
But again, age, age, two point nine to twenty-two. And that brings us to our total. If there are no questions, the chair can just close the public hearing and we'll move back into the other end.
All right, seven oh eight. We will be back into our normal session here. And I will, um, make a motion to approve the FY twenty-three budget request of twelve million, six hundred and thirty-four thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Any discussion? Do we ring none? All in favor?
And then the only thing left is, there's two little policies here that we may or may not rescind. So if you will, I'll just try to run through them. I should make Mary do them actually, because Mary sits on the Tantascwa Subcommittee to review these things. So IJJ and IJOB one do not exist anymore. If they ever did on MASC's master policies, which is one thing that usually brings them to say, do we even need them? Um, sometimes policies are just repeating law and sometimes they're really going through process and procedure and are they really needed? This one here, IJJ, I actually think is a little bit antiquated. And, and it has language in here that's, that's fairly old and not necessarily in that, uh, you know, paying attention to given gender roles. There's other things that we want to pay attention to when we're looking at materials and choosing textbook, textbooks. This thing was, um, put on the books back in two thousand and eight. And at the time, it was certainly an MASC policy because we bought all of MASC's policies and anyone else will put them on our books. But they have since deleted it. We certainly, we know, we go through a, a pretty rigorous process when we're purchasing new textbooks and curriculum materials and we pilot it and we look at it through a number of different lenses. Um, so the recommendation in Tantascwa, we moved it from their, um, policy book and just rescinded that. And the same, you know, with IJOB one, we certainly have. Um, we want to continue with, with community resources and volunteers and we have a pretty good hardy process to get them in and to make sure they're oriented to the building. Um, this is just something that doesn't necessarily have to be a policy. And, and policy usually kind of involves rigorous rules. Um, we like to give the administration the ability to kind of adjusting the protocols as they bring in volunteers. So we wouldn't look unless there is a concern to rescind those two policies.
I will, um, make the motion to rescind upon first reading, policy IJJ as well as IJOB Is there any discussion on either of those two policies upon first reading that we have?
Yes, I do. About the textbook and the, the selection of things for the library, um, is involved in making those decisions. And as we all know, it's very much in the news lately about materials that are being accessed in schools by children. Um, and while I haven't gone through all of these shelves, I have gone through them at the junior high and I do have some concerns. So curious if there is any, uh, who, who makes those decisions and is there any parent or family inputs or, um, how, how can we have a, how can we have transparency in that? So I think there are concerns.
This is definitely not for the library. It's definitely not a full editing process. It's, um, the library who makes selections. I do approve the requisitions, but we don't have that accept policy. The procedure for the textbook piece, that's different because again, as Deb had said, it's a vetted process. The publishers that we deal with are addressing all of these. We're not looking at any textbooks that don't adhere to this type of, um, criteria. But the library, I'm willing to have discussion and talk about how you might like to see that involve. I'm sure Jen, she reads?
I think she.
Well, if she was just talking about, she, I mean, she's going through your library right now and developing a pretty hardy list of those that she thinks we should be obsolete, either old or, or the materials just aren't either relevant or aren't appropriate. So those, anytime we make something obsolete, the process is for it to come to you. Usually it comes in a red-along list. Um, and, and school committee would vote to do them obsolete. So that, but getting rid of is, is probably far more official and formal. Certainly you, you get a list of the title and the, um, the author. The purchasing, yes, when you kind of vote a, a line item to purchase new library books, that is, is really the librarian with some oversight from the principal.
Do you want to talk, Jen, a little bit about like what you're, what you look at as you're making purchases?
Tracy and I recently went through, she asked me with Rins and your books today to find out, you know, the average age of our collection and it's, it's pretty old. Um, we have a lot of, a lot of things that are, um, more than twenty-five years old in here. Um, that aren't exactly things that kids are going to take out, although sometimes they surprise you and take out older things. Um, but there's, you know, there are definitely materialism, you know, thinking about just our nonfiction as far as technology, like the average age of our technology section. And we, most of the books really are obsolete at this point. So that's.
So as you're purchasing though, I think that that's what Kristen is getting at. So, uh, am I correct? So as you're looking to replace and replenish?
Yes.
What are you looking at? Are you, you, you're using recommendations, I'm sure from?
Recommendations, School Library Journal. Um, you know, I follow a lot of, you know, authors and, um, book associations just to find out like what is, you know, kind of, what is the, the flavor of now? Like what are kids into? What do they, you know, need to be kind of exposed to? I mean, there's, there's so much that they can learn from simple picture books, but, um, you know, you have to think about what's the, what's appropriate for different. I mean, we have books that are just for sixth graders and then we have, you know, the kind of pri, more primary level library and then the books that we kind of gear the second and third graders towards. And we don't say like, no, you can't read that book. But, you know, we're, we're looking to kind of intensify the diversity of the collection and really have something for everyone. I think every year our, the, the school is changing. You know, we have a need for large print books. We have a need for books in now twelve, you know, twelve different languages. So we've been trying to find resources for, for really everybody. And at the same time, kind of making room on the shelves because these, these shelves are pretty packed, you know, and a lot of the things are.
Obsolete.
Yeah, obsolete and not being taken out. And, and the whole thing with libraries, like you want, you want these books to be in and out. Like I want these shelves to be empty, you know, because I want the kids to be taking their books out, so.
So there is, you would have a full list of everything that's available that, like is available for parents sort of guy, you know?
Yeah. The, the, we have the online catalog that at any point, you know, you can go on and see, you know, what's available.
You can access that.
And if you're going to burn any books, we get them out of there first?
You bet.
We get the list.
Absolutely.
Okay. Well, thank you for answering my question. Anyone else have any? All right.
Did we vote on, that's what I'm not sure, did we vote?
So we had to say all in favor to rescind upon first reading IJJ and IJOB one.
Great.
Yes, passes, thank you.
Then we'll ask, will there be something else?
You want to take a motion to adjourn?
Done.
Second. In favor?